Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States and America, and the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, indivisible.
This is from...
Per National Law, we are being videotaped. Are we going online? Okay. First up are some key action items. First is Bentley Estates, file number fifteen dash oh oh nine C. We have a SW Cole progress report and surety reduction.
Yep. Back to Bentley Estates. We have a bit of an update from Derek and a surety reduction request from Mr. Kofuri. I'm just gonna go through the bullets of the update and to follow along, Derek's also attached a lot of photos. So regarding the roadway, it's been constructed to final surface pavement grade and the surface coat meets specifications. There are inconsistencies observed in the berm, but remedial work has been advised. When assessing the sidewalk, the sidewalk has been installed to final grade and also met specifications, but there are some irregularities in the grass strip that were observed. Action has corrective action has been taken already. The grass strip, there was some marginal vegetation observed, so monitoring is recommended to be ongoing. Oil separator tees must be installed in the catch basins, and this has already been called out in the December review, or sorry, in the October review. For the roadway shoulders, they're vegetated and stable. For lot number six, which is still undeveloped, it's not loomed and seeded, and the basin does need routine maintenance. The fire cistern has completed, or landscaping is complete. The bollards just need to be installed. And then when it comes to lot completion, everything is fully developed with the exception of lot number six. So the recommendations are as followed. Install the oil separator tees in all catch basins as previously noted. Continue monitoring and maintenance of all the grass strips and vegetated areas, particularly adjacent to undeveloped lots. Install the safety bollards around the fire cistern to meet the safety standards and complete the loaming and seating of the roadway shoulder adjacent to lot number six. SW Cole also requests the final ASBIL for review, along with completion of all outstanding items. With regards to the surety, it is recommended to reduce the surety from the held one hundred and ninety-four thousand to one hundred and eighteen thousand. Eighteen thousand will be retained for completion of section one, what we just described, the completion of the roadway, the sidewalks, the fire cistern, et cetera, with a hundred K retained for section two being Wayland Way, which has not yet been constructed.
The roadway's being constructed.
Oh, sorry, the roadway has...
Just not the utilities.
Not the utilities. Pardon me.
So Derek, can you tell me again about Wayland Way?
So Wayland Way, they're set to begin, they want to begin in 2026, and Mr. Kofuri would like a surety reduction so that he can begin, so that he has the funding to continue Wayland Way. So they've broken out into two separate sections, this for phase two. This first part with Bentley Estates, which we've been monitoring, and then the second part for Wayland Way, which needs to be completed, has a hundred K in surety and has not yet been assessed by SW Cole.
So that surety that we have is separate than the one ninety-four that we have?
I think in our review, it's held as one lump sum, but SW Cole has separated it out into two. They held ninety-four for this original Bentley phase, section one of phase two, and then a hundred K for Wayland. And in different, in a past review SW Cole has submitted, they were the ones who separated it out and said, keep a hundred K for Wayland Way, retain this part for the Bentley side. And he's the one who's recommending keeping eighteen K for this remainder of phase, or of section one, pardon, and keeping a hundred K for section two. We, in our accounts, have it as one surety. So the overall surety would be reduced from one ninety-four thousand, hundred thousand, to hundred, eighteen hundred thousand.
So they're suggesting that it would cost fifteen thousand dollars to complete everything but Wayland Way?
Yeah.
And to put a twenty percent contingency of three thousand dollars.
I understand that the total surety you've got written here is a hundred and seventy-six thousand.
That Derek sent us a slightly incorrect review at first, so pardon if there is an inconsistency. It should be reduction of seventy-six thousand from one ninety-four K to a hundred and eighteen K. So I know that's a little confusing, but... So pardon, it's not a hundred and seventy-six, it's one eighteen, and a reduction of seventy-six thousand.
So I am of the opinion that persons on the estimate of fifteen thousand dollars to do something and to put a twenty percent contingency on that is not sufficient because if it defaults and we have to do it, it's gonna cost us more than that. So I would, I would think that perhaps if we retain twenty-five thousand on that part and reduce it by whatever that is to a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Okay.
I don't know what everybody else thinks, but I think that's a safer thing to do.
Yeah, I agree.
So we would end up with a total surety of one twenty-five. And I'm not sure that the hundred for the other roadway is sufficient either. Because I'm sure that we could not do it. It's constructing a whole road, right?
The road's been constructed, so there are some outstanding items like the sidewalks. I think there's some work that needs to be done on the fire cistern, the curbing, and seat and loam of the areas in between the sidewalk and the roadway.
Okay, so then I would put, entertain some kind of...
Mr. Chair, I would move that we reduce the surety by sixty-nine thousand dollars for a total retained surety of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next unanimous. Okay. Next up is Bergeron Lane, file number twenty-five dash twenty-five fifty-three. Approval not required plan.
Good evening to the board. Attorney Mac Long on behalf of the applicant. Much as you might, I don't have a...
Oh, sorry.
All right, so we're dealing with Bergeron Lane here. This is the subject property, lot two, and then this is lot two A. We're simply taking this small triangular piece of the southern butter and adding it to the northern piece of property to make it a Form A buildable lot. This is pretty much the only lot on here that's not already developed. We have a two-family house to the north. This is sitting here as vacant land, and then there's a residence on lot two. And they struck up a deal to subdivide this small piece of, I believe it's like two thousand square feet, it's kind of hard to read here, to add to lot two A to then make it a Form A buildable lot. We have the requisite frontage, we meet the upland requirement. It was just shy of the square footage for a buildable lot by, I believe, two thousand square feet or nineteen hundred square feet. So we're adding this triangular piece to, in fact, create the buildable lot, and it meets all the other requisite requirements under the bylaws. Pretty straightforward on this one.
Okay. So who's the applicant?
So the landowner is April Veloi, and that she is technically the applicant because it is her property being subdivided. And then after, you know, so long as the board approves it, then that property will be transferred to the northern butter, which is owned by Raposa Properties.
Okay, planner?
Yep. So this is a proposal to convey parcel A, area two thousand three hundred and eighteen square feet, from lot two to lot one A. The lots both front on Bergeron Lane away in existence when the subdivision control law became effective in Westport. They both meet the minimum frontage requirements, and they have, the way has sufficient with suitable grades and adequate construction to provide for the needs. It is a gravel road with some drainage issues. The lots in question do meet the minimum intensity regulations for Westport after the conveyance. So staff finds that the proposed A and R meets the criteria for endorsement and recommends an endorsement of the proposed plan.
So this'll be an approved lot for a single-family house?
Yes. Yeah, it doesn't have enough square footage for a two-family.
Just checking.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve this A and R for endorsement. This applies with the rules and regulations for approval is not required.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So once this is approved, how many buildable lots are there on Bergeron Lane?
To be honest with you, I'm unaware of any beyond this one.
Well, how many are, then how many would that make in total?
As in that are not currently built on? Or, because right now, so coming off of Route 177, the first two lots have houses. This lot on the westerly side does not. Go down next to, next to, next to. Looks to me like there's one more on the very southern border there. That's one large parcel that has a house on it. So as far as I'm aware, I think this is the only remaining buildable lot that's a Form A on Bergeron Lane. And this one is right at the beginning of the laneway.
So this is a gravel way?
Yes.
Is this a rural residential way?
I don't know that it meets that requirement. I think that it preexists our definition of a rural residential way. Because this was originally used to access that, those lots that abut on Saudi Pond. Might be on the length of the overview of the GIS.
On GIS?
It's that color phone line you have.
I've had this.
Oh, okay, perfect. That works. Yeah, so these three all have houses. This one doesn't. This has a building on it. But as you can see, Bergeron Lane continues down and then goes along Saudi Pond over here. So some of these are the postage stamp lots that have been in existence for quite some time.
Well, I think I know where Mark is going with his question, because if it's a rural residential lane, only four lots can have frontage on it for a building.
Yeah, I don't think we're...
And six total with access, with frontage on a different way, but access on this. And so all these little lots on Saudi Pond still have access through Bergeron Lane?
Yeah, I believe it also, it tails out into Robert Street if I'm not mistaken. It may or may not. I don't think it shows it on the plan, but I don't, I don't believe that it qualifies as a rural residential way, because this has been in existence. And we're also not the last lot on the plan here. This has been in existence.
Yeah, but the, the lots that are carved out, there's seven lots, are, I believe, came before us to approve this extension of Bergeron Lane or redefinition of it. Do we know if we have a previous subdivision approval?
I didn't see that in my research.
It was a bylaw though.
Yeah.
It was Eric, and it was Jesse Rodrick. It was the Rodricks.
Like maybe eight or ten years ago, or?
No, no, it was like, since I haven't been on the board that long.
Saint Juvenant, right? Because this was one parcel, and they subdivided it by...
From my research, it was, it had frontage on a way that was suitable at a grade as the planners had pointed out, and meet the criteria as a Form A lot. I understand the concern, but, you know, it isn't the last house on gravel road, it is the second house, and, you know, it's about a hundred and fifty, two hundred feet off of Route 177, so I'd say it's in the most well-maintained area of the, of the dirt road. You know, I think it meets the criteria.
My recollection and also reading the, you know, the correspondence from the attorney, I think which had been submitted previously, this is a road that predates the zoning. We have allowed Form A divisions on this way, and we have made a judgment that the roadway was of adequate construction previously.
So it looks like on the satellite picture that the existing house duplex on lot two had a driveway coming through the middle of lot one A.
Where, where, this is the lot in question. We're taking the triangle from here. Their driveway is not being interfered with. This driveway is shown here. Now, I do know that the property here, they are family, so there may have been, as you can see, they've been driving over that, but the driveway is shown on the frontage portion of the lot on Bergeron Lane. So I don't think we have any concern with the driveway.
See, what I can't remember is, because when we approved this, I, and I, Ross, you may be entirely right, but I just don't recall whether we were looking at a proposal with, you know, there was, there were fewer lots being proposed, and we, under that basis, we accepted it.
I, I don't know the full history. I'm not gonna sit here and speak on it.
I don't recall the exact details.
I do think this lot, this lot has been in existence for quite a while, since that subdivision occurred, and but for being two thousand square feet shy of being Form A. You know, I think that what happened was some of these lots were already with homes constructed on them, and that was what caused this to be slightly shy of the requisite.
But I, I don't think we ever approved this as a subdivision. We didn't, we never approved this as a subdivision with a rural residential road requirement.
No idea. As far as I'm aware, I'm not aware of anything.
My recollection is that, this, this is just my recollection, this is a way that was in existence for nineteen hundreds.
Yes. As I said, it went down to Saudi Pond. So, you know, I think it's clearly a Form A.
So, you know, I, I think that we can, this is a de minimis change to the, to the lots. The question, and it's probably not germane to anything except my, my thought process, when we did these A and Rs before, why was it made less than the sixty thousand square feet when clearly it could have been?
Like I said, I think that southern of butter had the piece that was needed, and so because that first lot that has a two-family duplex on it, the one that's right up against 177, I don't know if that took extra land from this southern lot. I really, I have not done like an extensive historical research of this parcel, just given the fact that I felt it met the requisite requirements for a Form A. So, and I know that the owner of the parcel that is purchasing and now becoming buildable has been working to try to cut a deal with, with the applicant for quite some time. So they were just able to come to an agreement recently, and that's what brings us forward today.
It was 2021. There were a couple A and Rs, but it was 2021.
So four years.
So four years ago. Was one of them lot one A?
Sixty-one lot one showing lots nine and 10. You have hereby notified the client entitled the plan only. The assessor's plot sixty-one lot one showing lots nine and 10 in Westport have been approved.
I think that those are ones that are on the east side of the road, but it doesn't matter. So Mark, do you want to second that?
I do. So I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you to the board. Have a good evening.
Next is C, Corey Ridge Estates, file number twenty-three dash oh three five C. Dismissal of Corey Ridge Appeal Update Informational Update Only, no board vote required.
The appellant for this case came to a settlement outside of the appeals process, and so the case was dismissed with prejudice, and the planning board's decision still stands as it was issued. Deas been in contact with Sean Leach, who's preparing some of the final items that we had asked them to prepare as the, as a condition of approval. We don't have any of those items at this time, but it is expected to move forward with the same conditions that the board approved.
Okay. So have we signed the plan already, or do we need to sign it when it turns up?
I don't know if there was, if he brought a Mylar to us or not, so, well, well, where do you?
We don't have the Mylar.
Yeah, we don't have...
We have a Mylar. D, Francis Estates, file number twenty-four dash oh three seven C dash SBA dash LID. Discussion of the construction roadway timeline and endorsement of Form F covenant in Mylar.
Hello, good evening, members of the board. My name is Nicholas Combs. I represent the applicant. I am here for you on the Francis Estates matter.
The what?
The Francis Estates matter, and at this point, I think we are seeking to go over the timeline of the anticipated construction and being able to move forward with the project. So we are anticipating to work right away to start on the project, and we anticipate being done early on in the 2026 timeline, getting the entire roadway installed so we can access the various lots as early as April of next year. So we're trying to really make up for time, put it in motion, and add some residents to your wonderful town.
You anticipate getting the base coat down before the asphalt plants close?
We are gearing towards and trying to do so. And we, I didn't receive any feedback from my client and its team of contractors that that was going to be an issue.
Okay, so do we have consulting engineer ready and able to go inspect when they call for?
We'll contract with, we'll ask MBL if we can contract with them. Yep.
And we have sufficient surety for that? I mean, deposit for inspection?
Actually, I don't know off the top of my head. We'll probably have to start a new account of deposit for construction.
It'll definitely need to be replenished at some point, so if it does now, then we'll ask, ask for that.
And we have to endorse Form F covenant, or we...
Yep. We have a covenant on the lots, which also means we can endorse the Mylar too, so I do have the Form F here. I'll pass it down. And I've got a blue pen too. Last page for you guys.
So do we need a, a vote on accepting the format as the covenant?
Yeah, that would be appropriate.
Mr. Chair, I would offer a motion to accept the covenant in our standard form and endorse the subdivision plans that have been previously approved.
I second that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much for the vote and your time tonight.
Okay, so which ones do we have to sign? There's a lot of paper here.
Oh, sorry, just, I think second to last page should say...
No, we'll have the Mylar and the paperwork ready for pickup tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
There you go. Thank you.
Then I'll get that recorded at the registration office.
Okay.
Yep.
We need a blue pen, I'm sorry.
Do I have a blue pen? Do we have a blue pen?
Say it again?
We need a blue pen.
Blue pen, here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do we need a new copy to sign that?
No, no, if one is in blue, that's great.
If one is in blue?
Yeah, yeah.
We just need to distinguish which is the original and...
Thank you.
This roadway timeline is just for information?
And hopefully so we can line up with your independent examiners.
No, the consultant review, construction, preconstruction.
Oh, yeah. Yes, we would like to schedule a preconstruction meeting. I'll reach out to you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Will endorse those at the end of our meeting.
All right, I appreciate your help today, and thank you very much for the staff all along in the work. Thank you again.
Good luck with the construction.
Okay, next is Lot and Trust, file number oh three dash oh oh nine C. Endorse Form O.
Yep. So at the October 21st, 2025 Planning Board meeting, if you recall, we released the surety for Magnolia, Cypress, and Sycamore Lane, or we partially released the surety. We retained fifteen K, releasing two hundred thousand. The fifteen K was retained for the ASBILs and for the confirming of the bounds installation. So we just didn't create the Form O at the time, so we'd just like to sign the, or endorse the Form O for the release of that two hundred K surety, please.
Do we need a vote, or we've already?
You've already voted. Yep. So I'll pass this down with a pen. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I just, the notary's gonna have to edit the... But I'm happy, this is a standing piece of business here, and I'm happy to sign it, but the notary, I have to tie a bullet on it.
Okay, next is six eighty-five Sanford Road, file number twenty-five dash two six eight four. Approval not required plan.
Hi, good evening. Rick Grundy here, representing my father, Earl Paul Grundy, relating to both properties here in question. Relating to both properties here in question. Simple estate planning, uh, move, uh, previously, there was one contiguous lot, uh, that has been handed down through nine to ten generations of, of family, and, uh, in fact, has a Revolutionary War, uh, headstone in the woods that is a, a great, 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 great grandfather of mine. So we are looking to, uh, and if you're interested in tribute, we've got a parchment from Samuel Adams, governor of Massachusetts, recognizing the Revolutionary War service. So our intent entirely here is not to do anything new or build, but simply to, uh, protect the property to be handed down to the next generation. Uh, my property is this one here, uh, which we had carved out about twenty years ago, uh, when I got married. It's held in a trust. Uh, we are splitting off my father's to put into a trust to start a five-year look-back plan, and taking the other piece of it and attaching that to mine, which is already existing in trust, and I'm gonna be purchasing it in order to facilitate that. So, uh, fairly straightforward just from an estate planning purpose in terms of what we're trying to accomplish.
Okay. We don't have that on here, right?
You should. You should have the plan. Yeah.
Well, we have a, uh, page seventy-nine.
Okay. Very good. So what is the Revolutionary War reference?
Well, that's just a family connection. Just in terms of context on why we're not looking to subdivide or develop the property. It's simply land held in, in family.
Are you the family that ran a hardware store? Spent a lot of money in your place.
That was the only store back then.
And I appreciate it.
No, it was a great, it was a great store. Uh, you know, these, these new.
They'll always be grumpies.
Yeah.
Yeah, they will.
And we could charge things, and, uh, you know, it was great.
So, Mr. Chairman, I think this is, uh, this is very understandable. He's, from this remained a lot, they're cutting a, uh, a, a compliant lot and then leaving a, an unbuildable retainer piece to, to be attached to the, you know, the remainder of the families. So I, I think this is, complies with our requirements for approvals not required.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. The, the only question I have is you leaving a fifty-foot strip from Sanford Road into the Big Park. Uh, when you're turning the corner, uh, you're not saving fifty feet, and I don't know if you have any thoughts of subdividing that in the future?
With, with this piece here?
Yep.
It was primarily, uh, out of the concern for, uh, the, the cut lot here, will be placed into a new trust, which is then subject to a five-year look-back. So if we were to lose that lot, the fifty, the fifty-foot move in from the wall there allows me on this side to retain control of that stone wall in terms of the, the vegetation and coverage just of it. It was, it was simply that, not in terms of trying to put a load, uh, up to this piece here. My driveway, when you look at the satellite, this is a stone wall here, and my driveway actually sits on that side of it. So it's really just to make sure that that stone wall, should there be a property change in the future, is interfered with by, uh, your neighbors.
Okay.
And then this is the end of that, too, so it would make for kind of an awkward road anyway, but my driveway runs right up that side currently.
And this, this strip on the, on the top?
Uh, ancient right-of-way. It's an old farm road. It actually used to connect all the way up to Tickle Road. Uh, but it's just an old, uh, ancient right-of-way that's too small for a roadway.
Cool. So who owns that?
The right-of-way, uh, shared by the letters as far as what we can tell from, from title.
Okay.
It's bisected by Stella, I think, what is it? Stella Drive off of the circle and then continues back to Tickle.
Okay, so I would enter the same option.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I believe that we, uh, we endorsed a plan as an approval not required because it meets our planning board requirements for such plans.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Should I have posted how I've decided? Because they changed.
Next up is Stacy Lane.
An official next to it.
File number twenty-eight dash oh oh two C. Endorse Form O. The Mylar and release of surety.
Okay. So ten thousand insured was held for the completion of the roadway. On October twenty-third of this year, I conducted a site visit to assess, um, and there, but there was substantial growth, growth observed. Um, there is a civil issue of an abutter creating access, um, on Fisher Road. As somebody who lives on Fisher Road creating access to Stacy Lane from the back of their lot, um, but residents and neighbors were guided to resolve this matter internally. Um, currently Stacy Lane is being partitioned for acceptance at Annual Town Meeting twenty twenty-six. Um, that civil issue needs to be disputed during the acceptance, but besides that, um, the planning department recommended release of surety for completion of the ways.
So it's your opinion, we're done?
Yeah.
Yeah, we've been, it's been constructed and signed off on for a while. We've been waiting for the grass growth to establish, and it has established for the most part, except for the one area where there's been someone driving off of Stacy Lane to access the back of their property.
So let it be your vote?
Yes, please.
Uh, I, Mr. Chair, I move that we endorse the, uh, Form A and release the remaining surety, uh, in the amount of, uh, ten thousand dollars and any interest in his accord.
I second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
I'm passing along the Form O for Stacy Lane Ain, also Benway Estates, which I edited to reflect the right surety that was discussed. And as a reminder, blue pen, please. Thank you.
By the way, I mean, I see it here out of, it was out of order, but I didn't see it till now, the letter, uh, on Bergeron Lane.
Yeah.
The status of way, yeah.
I read that from, from Rick Borges.
I just read it.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, next is Woods Hole Group. Contract extension for Westport's Barrier Beach Management Plan.
I would like the board's permission to extend our contract with Woods Hole Group for seven, seventy-eight thousand three hundred thirty-nine dollars, um, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. We were, this is, uh, the amount is the amount that we were awarded from the Coastal Zone Management Grant. We're very pleased with the work that Woods Hole Group has been doing. I think they've done an excellent job in the public engagement processes, and so what they're going to be doing is continuing to do public outreach, um, with various town departments, um, to talk about, uh, in particular to talk about, the way that the, the town ought to be managing these resource areas, particularly in, in the light of storms, and just to make sure everyone is on the same page, that this is going to be the approach moving forward, um, as well as finalizing the Barrier Beach Management Plan and taking that through to permitting, um, by the end of the, the contract period.
And the, the grant provider is okay with the extension?
They are okay with the extension. The reason why I'm asking the planning board for permission is because for the procurement process, because we're not putting it out to an RFP, I checked with their finance office, and they said that it's fine to extend the contract so long as the board votes on extending the contract. And that's due to the, the dollar amount of the.
Do we have the money for this?
Yes, yeah, yeah. We secured the award, or we got notice of securing the award a couple of months ago, and we're in contract with Coastal Zone Management on the grant.
And originally it was supposed to expire at the end of the year?
Well, the, the previous grant did expire at the turn of the fiscal year, so this is another grant that we were awarded, but kind of piggybacking off of that contract. We are actively in contract with Woods Hole Group, um, for the Municipal Honorable Ability Preparedness Grant, so this is yet another extension of the services that they've been providing.
Okay.
I think they have a very good firm in their, in, in our ability to address the, you know, the whole barrier beach system is really important.
Cherry and Webb Beach will also be included in this.
In this one?
Yeah, in this one.
That'll make some, somebody a little happier.
Okay. So Michael, they've.
We'll get John's vote.
So they completed what they initially proposed in their, phase one, so to speak.
Mm-hmm.
They've completed all of the things that they originally, uh, contract, were contracted to do under phase one?
Yeah, they have. Um, so we have a draft of the plan in hand, um, that's still being reviewed by Coastal Zone Management before we're able to officially issue it to the public, so that is forthcoming, but Woods Hole Group had prepared it, um, in a timely fashion. We've just been waiting for CZM to let us release it. All, all grant deliverables have to be approved by CZM before they're released to the public. Um, but so, so what they're doing with this is to continue refining that plan by meeting with various town departments that have interests in the Barrier Beaches, as well as having check-ins with, um, additional stakeholder groups like Mass Audubon, um, West Portland Conservation Trust. We wanted to spend a little bit more time meeting with everyone who has an interest in the management of these Barrier Beaches before moving on to final permitting, um, with the state, and so they'll be taking this through that final draft, as well as the permitting procedures. And the, the permitting will, will begin later on next year, probably April, May, and finishing in June.
And once we have, uh, approval on, we have approved permits?
Mm-hmm.
Then we can apply for grants to help fund whatever that includes?
Hmm, not, this will give us, the, the Barrier Beach Management Plans will give us, we're, we have a series of recommendations of what the town should pursue.
Right.
In, in managing these areas, to, to better manage these areas, and so that will give us, it won't unlock grants, but it'll give us additional, um, it'll give the applications additional, that give the requests a little bit more emphasis in the review process because we've gone through this planning process, um, spelling out how these resources should be utilized.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if you're ready, I would, uh, move to, uh, extend the Woods Hole Group Phase Two contract to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, planners report.
We submitted two grant applications to the Buzzards Bay Watershed Infrastructure Support Grant. The first was for MS four work, um, which we requested ninety-seven thousand dollars to fund a variety of different obligations in the town's MS four permit. So that's doing the illicit discharge detection and elimination investigation, a complete mapping of the town's storm sewer system, which is a pretty tall order, um, updating the town's storm water management program and pollution plan updates, as well as helping with the various reporting to the EPA, and we're going to work on a municipal storm water best practice, um, retrofit at the public library is the area that we had identified. The retrofit is a part of the, it's a recommended component of the MS four permitting, um, and so we want to do this because it's in service of a larger storm water project that we're working on for the head of Westport, and this is up the storm sewer system. Um, so that's why we selected that location. So we submitted this, I submitted this yesterday. Uh, we're working with Kleinfelder and, um, Mass Maritime will also help out with some of this, uh, to do some of the, if, I don't know if you've seen them out there before with the, their illicit discharge detection trailer, but they go around town with a trailer that has Mass Maritime on it, and, um, they have, bring the cadets out, and it's a good partnership, so people get on job experience while they're still in school. So, anyway, that, that's what the first grant application was for, and then the second one was for continuing the work that we've been doing at Hicks Bridge. So we requested three hundred two thousand dollars to continue, um, uh, or to, to look at, to, to request funds to move the preliminary designs through permitting, as well as, um, for implementation and, uh, well, I guess, and final engineering and, and then implementation. And so this is a part of a, this component of a larger one point seven six million dollar project. So this is only going to fund a portion, if, if we're selected, but only fund a portion of the project, and so, but we'll use the funds if we secure the award is to, um, rework the current entrance ramp. And so the, the entrance ramp, what we would like to do here is improve the, the safety conditions of that ramp. It's pretty steep, um, and we're no longer able to use the ramp from the Nokochoke, uh, Association property, and so we'd like to make it easier for trailers to come in and out of that, um, and as well as make sure that the storm water from the ramp is being captured and treated before discharged into the Westport River. Um, we decided to go with the site access first, just because that seems like a sensible place before, to s- to start mobilizing for future iterations of the project, which will include improved storm water improvements to the parking area, um, doing some salt marsh restoration, and completely replacing the, the boat launch.
So who are we applying to Seaport?
This is the, this grant is the Buzzards Bay Watershed Infrastructure Support Grant, which is through the Buzzards Bay National Estuaries Program.
Yeah.
Which is a mouthful, but, um, yeah, it's through that program, but we have other funding sources identified, like the Seaport Economic Council. Uh, we some, will be submitting a grant application through the new ECO One Stop Program as well, um, once that's released later, I think, early twenty twenty-six, so.
So the, a good source of the money, the head of Westport, uh, might be the Seaport because they already funded fixing the wall.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So, you said this is 300 and what, is that how much?
302. There's...
For the Hicks Bridge?
Yeah, for Hicks Bridge Landing. With this grant program, you can only submit a total of two applications per municipality, and you can't exceed in total requests $400,000, so that's why we landed on 302. It was just whatever was left over from the MS4 request. I really wanted to prioritize the MS4 request just because we only have $18,000 a year to do that work, and we have probably, just taking a stab at it, but probably between $60,000 to $80,000 in work we have to do before year 10 of the MS4 permit, which is coming up in three years. So, if we can get this done under this grant, that'd be great because that would free up a significant part of our budget for the next couple of years.
That would be good. A lot of communitys hire somebody on staff to do this work and allocate about $120,000 a year to do it. So, if we're able to do it this way with an $18,000 budget.
But one thing that I was interested in is, does part of this $300,000 go toward improving the access to that landing? Because now without the Nokuachoke land, you know, we used to have a, you could go in one way and go out another way.
Yep.
And that, that's a very, I don't know if this is appropriate time to discuss this, but it's, it's neither here nor there, maybe regarding the grant, but maybe this. It's just that it's a very tight, narrow spot right at the end of the bridge or the beginning of the bridge. Cars come down the road at a pretty fast clip, and they're coming up across the bridge at a fast clip. And if you imagine a car pulling out with a trailer, a boat and a trailer out of that...
And trying to do a U-turn and go towards Dartmouth.
Yeah.
So, that is what I'm trying to vision, how that's going to work. I mean, we need to make, something needs to be made to improve that, or we need to put, you know, signs up.
Yeah.
Slow, danger, you know, hindering traffic if they calm people down.
You're spot on with that, and that's what we'll be working on if we receive this funding, is to rework that, that access. Because that's, you know, the access is the critical piece to make this whole work and to make it work safely. The Nokuachoke Association situation, that was an unexpected pickup in the redesign process, and so we didn't have the funding to rework the design of the current entrance with the funding that we had available at the time. So, that's a big reason why we prioritized it with this grant application.
You make a very good point. My wife, Rose, I'm a voyage and I help among those boats in and out of there and get them out. And it's, and they're 32 feet long on a trailer. So, now you, with the truck, you're talking about turning something that's 55 or 60 feet long. It's tough.
All right. So, I'll move on to an update to the, our Hazard Mitigation Plan. We had our final committee meeting. Bob and Jim were at the meeting this morning. So, this plan, what's going to happen next with it is that the, that PAR Corp. is going to incorporate the public comments that were made from the survey that we had released a couple of months ago. They're going to finalize that. We're going to go to the Select Board on December 15th to present an overview of the plan to them. We'll request that they vote to endorse the plan, and then that plan will be submitted to MEMA and then subsequently FEMA for their approval, and then the plan will be in full effect. We are going to continue the Hazard Mitigation Planning Committee meetings, End of the Future Meeting Quarterly, once we get our approval. We'll be meeting quarterly, just to discuss what are the priorities for implementation and see where we can collaborate with different departments on that implementation. So, we already have a head start on some of the implementation items because we've been working along, kind of as we've been developing different plan recommendations. We've been working on trying to find funding for different, different recommendations in that plan. So, I think we'll be in a good place for that. So, we'll just see what happens with the plan approval process. I've not submitted a plan to FEMA before, so I don't know how long it will take. They said a couple of months, but we'll see.
So, once it's approved, the plan is endorsed by the Select Board, and the committee continues to meet quarterly to talk about implementation and which, which has the highest priorities and stuff like that. Does the committee still have the ability to amend this plan?
That's a good question because I think we could probably amend it on an unofficial basis. I would have to ask PAR to see, because they have a lot of experience in preparing these plans. So, I would ask them, need to ask them if there's a process you have to go through to amend it with MEMA and FEMA. I would imagine that there probably is.
Because I would hope, like the Climate Resilience Plan, once that gets done, that it becomes a living document, that it can be amended as, as things change, as we complete some stuff. Other things are going to crop up that we didn't think about.
Yeah, and that would be great because then you know, when it comes time to renew, these are, I believe, five-year plans, and so you don't have to do a complete overhaul like we are now because the last plan was approved in 2003. So, a lot, lots changed since then. And we essentially started from scratch with this version, so I'll follow up on that.
And do we have to get a recommendation from the planning board to the Select Board?
We don't have to, but it wouldn't hurt. But for the, for the formal process, it's not necessary.
Well, I think some of us will show up when the thing is presented to the Select Board anyway. That's on the 15th?
Yes, on the 15th.
December.
Yep. Okay, an update on our Route Six Neighborhood Plan. I would like to invite the planning board to come out to this meeting, or we're going to have a public meeting at the Mac Hummer School on December 11th at 6:00. And what we'll be doing at this meeting is going over the, so we're working with Serpide on this, and Serpide has prepared a number of kind of visioning exercises. I'm sure you've all been through them before, where you're looking at various types of development precedents and then the feedback that you get from people's reactions to those development precedents. We'll then eventually inform of a report that spells out the vision for the neighborhood, and then you can subsequently use that to incorporate into zoning amendments. And so, that's the whole goal of this, is to ask the community, what would you like to see from commercial development in the future? How can we update our land use table? How can we update our, not just for commercial development, but for residential development? Do we want to create a new program for starter homes and cottage clusters and things of that nature that can fit in with the character of, of Westport, but allow some additional housing opportunities in a pretty key corridor where there are some changes eventually coming? There should be a road diet of Route Six that we don't know when that's coming. I haven't heard anything from DOT, so I'm not sure. But when you change, if it goes down to a one-lane road, it's going to function very differently. And so, I think that is coming, especially for Westport, probably sooner, or I don't want to say sooner rather than later. I think for Westport, going down to one lane and maybe with some pull-offs is probably more likely. And so, I think we should plan for what the built environment around that can look like. And so, that's what we're attempting to do, is to get the finger on the pulse of what the community would like over a 10-, 15-year period for incremental change. And I think that's really a key point of this, is that we're not looking for, you know, large-scale new development. We're looking at what is the next level, next increment level that folks could support moving forward, so.
This would be for the Route Six corridor?
Yes. And some of the adjacent areas as well. So, looking at some of the neighborhoods adjacent to Route Six. I have a map of it that I can pull up.
So, we've gone through this process a couple of times already. We did the narrow street development study, and we did the serpent study from 20-something years ago. It kind of broke Route Six up into three, three different sections. The westernmost being mostly commercial, the middle being mostly mixed use, and the, the Dartmouth ends more village. And, but I think that was done at a time when the factory building was still, still there.
It was done in, in 2014, I think it was.
No, it was done way before that.
Before then? The Narrows? Oh, well...
The Narrows in 2014.
Okay.
The original Route Six study was done 20 years ago. Maybe even 22 years ago.
So, that's the study area up there that's highlighted in the...
That's the new one?
Yeah, that's highlighted in the, and we had updated it with the STOD when, after Serpide had come and discussed with the board. So, that's been added in there. I think, you know, one of the things, one of the things that I think needs to be addressed in this plan is that the recommendations for development and some of the previous plans haven't come to fruition in the last decade or so. And so, I think it's time for a new vision of what the corridor could look like.
So, is this what, am I looking at what Serpide has done and he's going to present at the meeting?
This is a...
Do they have graphics like this of different concepts?
This is a draft, and actually, we've met with them today, so it's no longer current.
But they will have these kinds of diagrams and...
Yeah, like, there's this one on demographics of the area, but then there's, you know, like the design precedents that I was talking about.
That's a good-looking building.
It is a good-looking building.
Which one are you talking about?
The air.
Oh, yeah, is that one you designed? We didn't pick that on purpose. They didn't know. So, this one's like about building massing and, and design and stuff. And then this other one is about how the streetscape works and, you know, kind of standard planning stuff about how the public space works with the private space and how that relates to the street. And then we'll take that and distill it and do a, a report and have recommendations for changes in the zoning code.
Sounds good.
Well, as we know, these kinds of meetings are not with the public are very, it's very difficult. You give them a sort of, you know, group of images, and people have their own preconceived notions and ideas. And usually, people who are at these meetings have some very specific agenda about what they would like to see or not like to see. It's just, it's very hard to kind of come to a consensus about what is best and will be in everyone's interest, the best interest of the town. But, I mean, you have to start somewhere.
You have to start somewhere, and it is, it is a tall order. I mean, you have to take into consideration not just the folks who live in the neighborhood, but the town as well, and is it going to garner two-thirds support at town meeting? And that's, that's tough to thread that needle.
It's a tall order. So, and I think we ought to go into this with the knowledge that a lot of people don't want to see Westport turn into Dartmouth. But I think we can also talk to the, to that issue by saying that our geology or topography, whatever you want to call it, is not suitable for what's happened in Dartmouth. It's wet on either side of the road.
Right.
I think if Route Six were to be permitted today, it wouldn't get permitted.
Right, right. I've, I've really been emphasizing that with, in our meetings with Serpide, that the maps that they create should all show the areas that are restricted from development, whether it be from wetlands, aquifer protection areas, conserved lands. It all needs to be reflected in the mapping because I think we're looking at a very large area, but the area that is actually developable is very constrained.
Right.
And I think it's important to put that out there. Also, we don't have, frankly, we don't have the utilities, you know? So, the utilities are going to be a huge constraint. You're not going to see like a five-over-one in Westport. It's just never going to happen.
Five-over-one, please explain that.
It's kind of the classic thing that's being built in a lot of quickly growing cities where it's retail on the bottom and five floors of residential over top.
This is just...
Sorry, planner jargon.
Put a TV on.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't use that term in a public meeting just because people are going to be...
Or you're just using a public TV.
Well, yeah, I guess so. Touche.
So, I think that's great. So, that's December 11th?
Yeah, December 11th at 6:00 at the Mac Hummer School.
And the public is invited?
Yes, absolutely. All right, next I have, and I was going to let John give an update on this. I don't really have too much to update on the open space and recreation plan. I did go to their meeting as a liaison for the planning board to talk about some of the recreation-related initiatives that we have ongoing through the planning board. So, the two main ones are Hicks Bridge Landing and the bike trail that we're doing, or I shouldn't say bike trail, it's a shared-use trail extending from the Coquashan River Rail Trail, and then as well as what Serpide and the South Coast Bike Way Alliance got funded for, for the cross-Westport Shared Use Trail. I was going to then have John lead in with an update on what their next steps are, but there were a handful of folks who attended. Their survey was a lot more successful. I think they got like 180 responses on that survey, which is pretty good. There's a recording of the meeting if you'd like to look at the, or see what was presented at the open space recreation plan. So, anyone interested, you can check that out on the town's YouTube page. But aside from that, I don't really have any updates because I'm not on the committee, so. And next is an, or is the ECO One-Stop Expressions of Interest. We submitted four expressions of interest to this new program, like on the development side where there's the One-Stop for Growth, where you have the Rural Development Fund and Mass Works and all those... and Mass Works and all those other programs. Now there's one, there's a one-stop shop for all the environmental, environmental grant programs. So I submitted one for the Coldwater Culvert Project that we've been working on over the last year or two years with Buzzards Bay Coalition. It's for the continuing the design work at Angeline Brook, Lions Brook and Snell Creek for the culverts and I think Cornell, the Cornell Road, Angeline will be a bridge crossing. The next one I submitted was for the head of Westport. We were, I'd initially submitted an MVP action grant, application for flood and stormwater resilience planning and developing some conceptual engineering, maybe some preliminary engineered plans for the head of Westport. And it was denied, but within two points of funding. And so I think if we get some feedback, we can potentially turn that into a successful application next year. And I submitted one for funding, well, it's an expression of interest, so they'll review it and give us feedback. But this one's for getting funding for the, getting signage for evacuation routes in Westport. So not just evacuation routes, but having signage to identify floodways and let people know.
Flood hazard.
Right, that this is a flood hazard area, stay, you know, don't drive through here during a hurricane or something like that. So I think the funds will be used mostly to install, to acquire the signage and install, install it with a contractor. I would like to build in a contingency just in case there are any roadway surveying needs. But from what I understand is that the, that the fire department has already identified the routes that we need to take. So that's a follow-up item from this morning's hazard mitigation planning meeting is to get that from, from them, which I think would make for a stronger grant application. And then Dia had submitted one for dune and beach monitoring, so she'll talk to you about that.
That's kind of a continuation of the barrier beach, the draft management plan that came out of the first contract with Wood School Group. So this was an expression of interest for dune, being in, dune, beach and dune monitoring and management. So one aspect we were thinking could be mean high level, taking measurements of mean high water levels and beach transits. So I requested thirty K for maybe a drone or some kind of surveying equipment so that the conservation, this, we're envisioning that the first year they'd help us with training and capacity and then this would be kind of taken on by the Conservation Commission to do regular monthly data collection at the beaches to kind of monitor the shoreline change. Then a second subcomponent of this, of this expression of interest would be some sort of establishing a culture of consistency around beach and dune practices, pre and post-storm practices, securing fencing, removing fencing and debris, post-storm removing debris. And then also like regular enforcement of dog regulations, of walking near the plover habitats, trash management. So some sort of maybe beach brigade or volunteer crew that kind of manages the beaches day-to-day activities and then also tracks these long-term changes. So it's an expression of interest. I worked with Chris Capone on the application. Like I said, we requested thirty K for funding, I believe, kind of looking at quotes for different kinds of surveying equipment and drones, but hopefully, you know, something comes of it. It's, I think it's, I think it aligns with the priorities that we have in some of our ongoing plans and drafts. But as far as how strong of an application it is, I'm not sure. I had Wood School Group also weigh in and help provide some insight into quotes and stuff. Part, yeah, part of it would be, I forgot about this aspect, dune grass, beach grass planting. So acquiring beach grass and planting it, so kind of multiple aspects here. Hopefully they'll give us some feedback, that's what I'm hoping for.
Yeah, well, get some feedback on it. It's, it's really at its core, capacity building, a capacity building application for the town's ability to apply the recommendations of the barrier beach management plan. I think it, you know, it's, it's something that the Conservation Commission could use some assistance with, like with doing the beach, or the, the dune monitoring with acquiring like a LiDAR drone to take those measurements. Yeah.
You might talk to, remember his first name, Cam?
Oh, heaven.
He used to drone that.
Yes, we know him well.
So I spent two hours planting dune grass this weekend.
Oh.
I did hear about that, George told me about that.
And it was surprisingly easy.
Oh, okay. That's good to hear.
So, I don't know about my back, but. But I think I planted, I don't know, three or four hundred things of dune grass.
Wow.
Well, George told me they had like twenty thousand plantings that they do in a weekend, so.
Oh, my goodness.
I don't know how many I planted, but I just kept on going.
Yeah, you just gotta.
Amazing.
And it's amazing, you look at the ones that were planted last year. They're growing. They have seed heads. I mean, and apparently they grow like a foot into the dune area.
Yeah, yeah.
Keep on going. It's amazing.
All right, that's it for the planners' reports. So Dia, do you want to do the assistant planners' report?
Sure. Assistant planners' report, first thing is Climate Resilience Committee, little update on resilient Westport. We're meeting this Thursday and in preparation of the meeting, Jeff and I have kind of been meeting with the subcommittees to get those priorities and impacts ranked. So we've been making great progress, actually. I think at this point, all, except for three of the water impacts have been ranked. The new ranking system has proven to be somewhat similar to the previous one employed by UMass, meaning a lot of the results ended up in the low category. Jeff had separated out high, medium, low. In fact, most of them are in the low category, so, but that's okay because they're not all the same score. So we're still getting a stratified score and we might just readjust what low is. Maybe low isn't from one to three hundred, maybe it's from one to seventy-five or something. So I, I think that we're in a good place to touch base with everybody on Thursday. You know, now that we have this chunk kind of out of the way, maybe we just need to touch base, do we all feel okay about this ranking? And we can move forward to some of the meat and potatoes of the, of the text writing. And this also gives us a chance to get ahead on community engagement. How do we want the community to, you know, interact with these rankings and, and get their feedback on what they think too? So I think we're in a better place than we were last week. Jeff was out of town a little bit, he's back, so that's great. And then, let's see, I'm going to be meeting with Kim Patello tomorrow, sorry, Thursday before the meeting regarding community engagement and maybe looping the school in, the fifth graders in. So I'll give you guys an update on that come the meeting. So, yeah, CRC resilient Westport is, is chugging along, luckily. Just met with Bob today, we had a really successful meeting.
So those who don't know, Kim Patello is the educational director of the Blackhead Island?
Yes, yep, exactly. Maybe outreach coordinator, yeah, yeah. And then projects, I sent you guys another updated projects report. This is just so you can visualize everything we've done this calendar year, everything that's come before us, what's open, what ended up getting closed. And there's one that's a pre-application that didn't quite fit into a category, Brick Metta Estates. So we've gone through one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight A and Rs, which is great. And then closed off some site plans, some subdivisions, a lot of solar and making our way through some of the other things, like, for example, Lawton Trust Bentley Estates, we're closing off some of the sureties with that inheritance lane. They actually told me that they finished construction, they didn't realize they had to submit an asphalt. So they're mobilizing to submit the asphalt right now. Corey Ridge, the appeal was just dismissed. Ferencis Estates, we just endorsed the Mylar. So we're making our way through, we're trying to, we're trying to get it done. I just got an update from eleven eighty American Legion Highway under site plans. They're coming before the ZBA in December, then they'll come to us for final plans. So this is helpful for me too because I can, you know, get on some of these people too and be like, okay, what's going on? So just wanted to share with you guys.
That's good.
Yeah.
I just got a question for you. So on, let's say on the solar, the closed projects means that they are.
They finished construction, they.
Or they were withdrawn, right?
I, I left out withdrawn. I left out anything that's withdrawn from this.
Well, I thought, I thought the Rod and Gun Club.
Oh.
I thought they decided not to do it.
They're withdrawn, yeah, then I forgot to delete that one, I'm sorry. I deleted some other withdrawn stuff, yep. So closed besides Rod and Gun, it just means they're operating. So I could have changed that closed to operating for solar. Yep, that's probably a better way to say that.
And then on the, the Route eighty-eight Sullivan Soltege.
Yeah.
Didn't we, we discussed this, I thought we did discuss it at the previous meeting on October twenty-first, but it's not in the minutes. This is the one where they want to come in opposite the.
Fire station.
The fire station.
Yep.
And was the issue of the drainage.
Yep.
And we, so we made no decision on it because you were going to look in to discuss it further.
Right, right. And they're actually, they're also changing their own plans. First they were requesting some waivers for their utilities, now they're putting it back underneath, now they're meeting with the power sources. So no, no update from them right now. They're, they're kind of figuring it out as they go to. They, they came requesting a lot of changes and they're kind of changing their plan too. But we, I met with them, I went on a site visit there within the last two weeks. And Derek goes out there pretty consistently too. So the construction is, is, is up to par. It's, it's just about, they're just running into some issues with their utilities, but they've switched and decided to put them all underground now and they're waiting on some meeting with their utility provider.
And some of the drainage that we didn't want to go into the soil.
Right.
Next to Route eighty-eight.
Right, right.
I only bring it up because I drive on Route eighty-eight. Now the leaves are off the trees, I've seen a lot of.
You can see.
Person moving equipment is just sitting there.
Right, right.
All of the, all of the racks are, I think all of the, all the racks are installed just waiting to put the panels on. Some of the panels are on the ones right next to eighty-eight. I just drove by them. I don't know, I couldn't really think to look deeply, but you could see it through the tree.
When I had touched base with the developer, he had said that they aren't altering the drainage of the gravel roadway, they're just improving it. So when he said that the water would sheet flow back into the woods, he was saying that that is what the water always did previous to Route eighty-eight being a development there. So when the concern about it over, maybe overflowing the wetlands, the contractor said this is how it's always drained in this area, so it's, it's just a return to the natural flow. So he felt like it wasn't a concern with the, with the discharge to a wetlands complex in the back.
Well, I think, I think eighty-eight is a barrier to the historic sheet flow in that area. Used to go from west to east. And with Route eighty-eight, it's not going to get over eighty-eight, it's going to go with the ditch.
So now you've got two parallel roads, you have eighty-eight and the new access road. And there's just this swale in between.
Right.
So, and the new road blocks any drainage from going east?
Yeah, it remains to be seen how they're going to address that issue because if I recall correctly, some of the, the electrical is going to be underneath some of the, some of the subsurface stormwater infrastructure, which is why they wanted to elevate the utilities. But we told them that's going to require an amendment to your special permit. So I, I don't really know where they're, they're headed, but we're trying to stay on top of it to get them to sort it out.
Ready?
That's it?
Okay. I have a question before we get to minutes. Somebody floated dates for meeting with the finance committee.
I did, yeah.
I didn't respond, I don't think, but.
You did.
Could I?
Yeah, we talked about it. Or maybe you emailed me about it, I think you said the dates were fine. But I, I filled out their survey and.
We don't know.
Haven't heard anything back.
Can you send me a copy of our budget?
Sure.
And if we want to change anything, where do we start with? Jim Hartnett or with the finance committee?
We could ask the finance committee, it's already been submitted to Jim Hartnett to be approved. So, but it could be, he's already made his recommendation to the finance committee, but obviously the board can make a different recommendation. Yeah.
So should we do that before the meeting? Take, when they come back with the meeting? Or should we do it at the meeting?
If there's anything you'd like to, to change, I think we should, should talk about it beforehand.
So send me the budget.
Sure. The, the budget that I had submitted to the town administrators, this, essentially the same budget that we've had since I started working here in terms of operations, but the, obviously the staff salary has been increased by three percent or whatever was applicable for.
Do we know that, like, what that it's supposed to be for twenty-six?
What that, what that looks like in a, a dollar amount? Yeah. Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll send that to you tomorrow.
Okay, minutes?
There are two items under correspondence too, I don't, these, these are really quick. The zoning board of appeals for ten seven, at ten seventeen Sodom Road heard a case where there was a non-agricultural operation. The building inspector issued a cease and desist, which they appealed to the ZBA. The ZBA subsequently told them that all of the non-agricultural operations must cease, which the non-ag operations were a pool water business and a mulching business. The materials for the mulching were not being generated on-site, they were being brought in from somewhere else. And they considered that more of an industrial application, the ZBA agreed with that. So the ZBA told them that they have to move the mulching materials from the site by December thirty-first, which was, the building inspector initially gave seven days, but they gave them an extra time period to move that.
So this is on Sodom Road, was it on APR property or just?
I believe it is APR property. It's between Adamsville and Charlotte White, it's that section of Sodom.
Well, that's a big section.
I know, but those are the only two intersections.
We have a new, um.
That's five miles.
Those are the two main roads.
Where they mow all the, the grass.
Yeah, where they took the walls out.
Right, it's right.
Right beyond that. It's in that cluster.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and it's been sold to the Westport Land Trust apparently.
What, a different one?
It's in the back.
In the back.
He and his siblings, the owner, sold the land to the Westport Land Trust. Final transfer is expected by June first of twenty twenty-six.
Because Russ ended up speaking to them.
And then the other one is a notice from the ZBA regarding seven zero eight Sanford Road. There is a dental office there, which is in the residential zoning district, and so it's therefore a non-conforming use. And the ZBA gave them permission to expand the non-conforming use, to expand the structure housing the dentistry.
The chair of the board is a patient.
I know, I laughed when I, when I saw that.
Really?
Yeah.
He excused himself.
Roger recused himself because he's a patient.
So, I mean, that's, that's been there as long as I've been around looking at stuff. I don't think that's been there since '08, but I don't know. What, what can we learn from their decision? If you get your teeth fixed, can you?
I, I think one of the things that we're trying to address right now and is how to deal with. these commercial areas that have, I, I think people value that these different services are available, restaurants, whatever they may be, but the underlying zoning doesn't allow for them, and that is a, a barrier to small business, and I think we want to support those small businesses, and that's why we applied to the One Stop Program to deal with some of the non-conforming commercial uses in Westport's historic village areas, and so I think the takeaway from it is that the, really, the residential agricultural zoning district is, it's one-size-fits-all, and you have a very long town with very distinct areas of town, and that doesn't really work.
So, you ought to consider the area where the dental offices, because there's also a variety store up there. One of the notes that we should consider.
Yep.
Because it, it serves the neighborhood, basically.
Yeah, and e- even if there is an area of town that isn't incorporated into this grant applica, or the, the grant project, we can completely just take whatever, yeah, yeah, and propose it at town meeting.
The, the business nonconformity is, is, it is a real issue here, since we have a lot, a lot of those events, and some of them, you know, if you, if it was something like a dentist office or something like that in, in essentially a house, you know, you, you know, I think that stays, as, it's, even though it's a non-conforming use, it stays as a pretty stagnant non-conforming use. But there are, there are other businesses that have trucks and yards and equipment and stuff that, that are doing well. We'd like to, we'd like our businesses to do well, but, but they have, you know, it, it isn't a stagnant nonconformity, that is, it doesn't, when I mean stagnant, I mean it's a nonconformity that's, that's not really changing. Like, like a real estate office, that, that's understandable, but, but a, a business that is really extended, expanding on the outside, that, that's a different issue.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, and there are plenty of nonconformities that, that, that did not exist before zoning, so that
Yes.
they have, they have crept in since zoning, but continued to expand or grow, and that's, that's an issue. So, we have to think about how to deal with that.
Yeah, I mean, you, in one end, you don't want to see this sort of sprawling of little businesses throughout the town. You'd rather see, you know, concentration in villages.
Right, you'd like to see the, the, like, to see the village, the central village be a successful business area.
Be a village, right. And not have to drive from business, but anyway, but at the same time, you don't want to drive small businesses out of, out of town, or out of business.
Yeah. So, then, our ADU bylaw was the one that was flagged by the AG?
Yep.
So, I had a call the other day from somebody about converting somebody's garage or part of it to an ADU. But the existing garage has been there for decades and decades and decades, violates the rear yard setback by a foot and a half. So, it was supposed to be six feet, and they got four and a half feet. Are they going to be able to convert part of the garage to an ADU without moving the garage?
Is it a legal nonconformity?
Yeah, well, I think it is, it's existing, no bits ever said.
I don't see why not. The ADU bylaw doesn't have any restrictions on, actually, the AG's office sternly advised us that if dimensional requirements are being used to prevent ADU development, then they can find our, or excuse me, new ADU. If it's being used to prevent a new ADU, or any ADU development, that the regulation can be found to be unreasonable, and I think if it's a legal nonconformity, and we're going to use that as grounds to prevent an ADU from being developed, I think it would fall into that category of what the AG was advising us of what not to do.
So, so what, what is a legal nonconformity? A nonconformity that's existed and nobody said anything?
Well, that would not be a legal nonconformity, but, you know, something that may have pre-existed zoning or some, the zoning may have changed.
And I think dimensionally, some of the, my, my understanding of the case law is a change of use in a building that doesn't change the nonconformity. That is, you, you have, you have a use and you have the, you have a nonconforming use in the building and, and you change that, and let's say they, they have to expand the, the building and they expand it in the front, but they don't expand it into the, let's say they have, they're required to have a five yard, a five-foot side yard setback. They have a four-and-a-half-foot setback, and they expand the building, but they expand it the other way, the other way, and it doesn't increase the nonconformity. Generally, that's found to, to be reasonable.
So, what I told them is if, if they're taking one of the garage bases and making it an ADU
Yeah.
and leaving the outside of the building alone.
You're right.
You're not increasing the nonconformity, so I don't think that the building inspector would give them a cease and desist or, or not give the building permission.
I think, I think that's.
And if, even if they did, I think the zoning board would, would look favorably upon it.
I think that's, that would comply with our ADU bylaw.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I, I had a chance to read the minutes, if we can move to that.
Sure.
I thought them to be extensive and complete. People have had a chance to look at them, I would, you know, approve them.
Yeah, I, I've read them also, and I agree. I, I second the motion. That was a motion.
Okay.
It was a motion.
I second the motion. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Super, then I would entertain, unless anybody has anything else, a motion to a term?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.